All right, we'll go ahead and get this meeting for February thirteenth, twenty twenty four called to order. Still missing a couple of people, but hopefully they'll come in as we get going. We'll begin the night with a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Did you get that working? Yes, we had to delete some old files and we're good. We're missing one of our board members. He's having some health issues and recovering from surgery right now. And then our clerk had a little emergency at home to take care of. And hopefully our attorney shows up pretty soon. But with Julie missing, I'm going to try to do more talking on the recorder. Who's making the motions and so forth, so she'll have good notes to take over. So I might do a little more extra talking than what you normally would hear. But we'll go ahead and get started with the roll call.
Dan Wicker present.
Brietta Pittcock.
Rex Snyder present.
And Nathan Alrick is present. So we've got Pam on the agenda for first, but she's not here. So we're going to skip right on down to Jimmy. And Jimmy's not here, but he's got three proxies that he sent. So go ahead and just stand and introduce yourselves, what you're from. That way the viewers at home can understand who you are, what you're doing and so forth.
Hi, I am Jenny Persley. I am Jimmy's sister and this is Kristen Morfield. And I'm Kristen Morfield and we're from the Dublin Community Club. We, as most of you know, took over in October of twenty-two. We are actually here, we did a summer event last year and it went really well. This year, we kind of want to step it up just a little bit, take up a little more space if we can. Kind of requires a little bit of blocking off as far as the street goes as well as the parking lot. We want to have as many vendors as we can. We had a few last year, but it was kind of last minute. It's kind of a end of the day thought between me and Kristen. So, but we want to work in as many vendors that want to come out and try to make it a big day. We had some bounce houses down there last year. So we're just kind of here to, I mean, obviously the building is the town's. So for the exterior of it to get the street blocked off from about, Jimmy said about ten AM till seven PM, a certain portion. We have a map on the packet of papers that I gave you. Kind of gives you a rundown of the area that we'd want blocked off as well as the parking lot. We'd also need to, we would like to have, if we can, the keys to the restrooms in the park. So naturally, when we did the Easter egg hunt as well as the summer batch, it brought a lot of families to the park. And they hung out down there and they played, their kids were out there. And we liked seeing that more than anything, having them come down and families showing up just like it used to be when we were all kids and we all hung out down there. And then we'd need to use the parking lot at the top of the hill by the ball diamonds just to kind of have a place where everybody can go so they don't have to park along the street. And park mode either Tuesday or Wednesday of that week in case, obviously, it rains in between. So if people are running through, they're not covered in fresh green grass. That's pretty much what we have for today. I don't think there's anything else. Anybody want to add anything to it?
I think our overall goal is to kind of bring back the Dublin days type of thing. And more so currently, like we've put an interest thing out. I'm sure some of you have seen it on our page, but we've put an interest out for vendors just to see if there would even be anybody that wanted to set up. And I have forty-two interested, different like craft vendors and a couple food and those kinds of things. So, you know, having that extra space is really going to help us be able to expand this event for us.
And this is for July the twenty-seventh.
Yes.
A couple of issues and concerns, some things we don't have control over. It's controlled by the softball association. We just so happen to be lucky that the president of the softball association is in his room tonight, Mr. Lenny Payne. So they have possession, that is their restrooms. So you would just need to get with the softball board or maybe with him later at night, find out about the restrooms because the town technically doesn't have control over that building. They put that up, they take responsibility for that. So that's out of our hands. Same as far as, you know, timing with, you know, make sure they don't have a softball tournament or whatever going on at the same time. So a lot of that goes back to them. So probably the main concern for us tonight is the street closure. And I don't think there'll be any issue with that. We'll take a vote on it here in a minute.
Okay.
But that's probably from us is probably the biggest concern would be that. So the rest of that, I would probably lean you toward, you know, maybe even going to a softball board meeting and or just checking with Lenny and you guys can work that out amongst yourselves. But I think it's a good thing. My only other concern was make sure you had the liability insurance. Because I know you guys have it like inside the building, but outside the building would be the only other concern. So.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
As far as the street, that turns to county at some point there, doesn't it Rex?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
So we wouldn't be allowed, we wouldn't be allowed as the town to shut that street, that part of the street down.
It would have to get permission.
It would have to get, yeah.
It would have to go to the north or the south side of.
Yes.
You would have to get, have to get permission from the county for that.
Is there a reason for closing it or just for safety or do you want?
Mostly for safety. There were a lot of people that were crossing back and forth last year and running up and down the sides. And then cars would go by and we'd all be like, it's more, you know, there's going to be, there were a lot of little kids running around out in the parking lot area and kind of going back and forth on the street. And then there were people that were coming down the hill and.
Or you plan to put banners out in the street too?
That's kind of what our vision is, is to have the vendors a little more spread out throughout the area. Obviously, we can use our parking lot for a few of them, but we're still going to plan on having the bounce houses and those kinds of things as well. And so having that parking lot area up top and then, you know, people can walk down through a couple of the vendors to get to our building is kind of our vision for that event.
Do you see any other concerns, sir?
No, cut it off this time, I don't. I just, I just wanted to.
Do you have a specific contact for the county?
No, I do not. I will get one though.
Probably talk to Mike Sharp, I'm sure, so. Any other questions from the board? If not, motion to close our half of that street during this July twenty-seventh event?
Motion.
Okay, Bree's making a motion.
I'll second her.
Rex is seconding the motion. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Our motion is best. Well, thank you guys for coming and thanks to you for keeping the community club going and doing this stuff. I know it's a big thing, helps the community all the way around, so hats off to you. Thank you.
Are you doing that Easter egg hunt again?
Yes. Yes, we are.
Yeah, we enjoyed that.
A lot of people said that we need to continue that. And that was, Marguerite Clark looked at me and she said, you know, the last time we had the Easter egg hunt, your mother and me looked at each other and said, we are never doing this again. And she said, and look who restarted it. And I'm like, I know.
Do you have a date on that?
March the twenty-third, that Saturday.
Yes, with the rain date being the following Saturday.
Okay, thank you guys. You're welcome to stay if you want. It's going to be a long meeting if you're welcome to leave if you want. So we're going to be right along. We got Jema Carpenter here and I'll let you introduce yourself to the camera, folks at home.
I am Jema Carpenter and I'm with the Cambridge City Chamber of Commerce. I am here in regard to the banner project. We are like capacity in town in Cambridge. And I know I came to a meeting in the fall of last year and discussed about opening it up to Dublin. I know that was ago, we wanted to do that, so here we are, it's time. But I need to nail down a few details and things with you guys first before I start putting information out there for people. So, and forgive me because, you know, I don't have my actual notebook. I just have some scribbles that I did really quick on the way over. But first and foremost, I know you had approached me about hardware. I brought hardware for you tonight to kind of look at.
Is it black?
No, and that was the other thing because he and I discussed that and powder coating. They don't, they don't offer a black option. I know it kind of looks strange, but for the sake of quality, like we looked through several different companies. And this, this company designed these particular brackets for this purpose. And I don't know if you saw, I had to retrieve our big banner out of the creek a couple of weeks ago, but not a single banner with the huge windstorms and everything that we had, not a banner, not an arm, not a bracket. Nothing was damaged. And that even went above the actual like iron arms that are attached to our poles that our actual town banners hang on, historic banners. Some of those blew down, some of the arms blew off. So these are like awesome when it comes to quality and just withstanding the elements. Excuse me, if you wanted to try to find somebody to powder coat those bands, that's something that you guys could do if you wanted to do that. You would just need to let me know if that's something you want to do because I would need to probably order those.
We like them, we like them one color.
Yeah.
You know, they, they stick out and it kind of looks.
I, I know.
You know how many you're talking right now?
What's that?
How many flags you're talking or banners you're talking at this moment?
That, that's to be determined with the, I guess, how many people show interest. So I know I've had four, because I did op, I did offer the option for some folks that are in Cambridge already who maybe would want their banner to come to Dublin to do so. I've had about four.
So we're not talking like fifty tomorrow?
No, and I'll get to more of that in a second. I do want to kind of stay real quick here. I'm going to pull this out so you can see. Sorry. So this is like bulky and so I apologize in advance, but I spared you all six of the straps. I only brought you two, so you could get the idea. But the arms are light in color. You're going to see part of that at the end here stick out. So it's going to be, there's going to be a funky color at the end. And then the actual part that attaches to the pole itself is this kind of like a matte silver gunmetal kind of color. I don't know if you could powder coat those. Those look like they are already powder coated. I don't know if you can powder coat over a powder coat. But you're more than welcome to, to look into that with the straps and these as well. But these.
So we can keep that set?
If you want to, yeah. But just make sure that we do, you know, get it, just in case we have an issue. God willing, we don't. But yeah, I'll leave this here for you. And I have a banner, a test banner in there. They were relatively easy to hang. I'll just tell you that one person hung seventy-nine of them in a matter of like three days. So they're super easy to get up. It's just, it's, what's the word I'm looking for? It's very monotonous, like tedious, same thing over and over. But these little clips hold the arms in place. So when you take them out, like for the season, you can pull these clips out and take the whole arm out, roll the banner up, and then you don't have those poles like hanging out. So it's not like a eyesore for you guys. That's what we're planning to do anyway. So I can leave this with you, I will. I will want the test banner back. So if you wanted to like, you know, test run and try to like see what you can do with this. That's how we determine the size of the banner too. Like we pre-hung a lot of the brackets before we put the banners on them. So we took this test banner and we like, you know, put it on the top arm and then hung on the bottom based on the size of that and then pulled that off and went to the next one until we were ready to hang. So you can pre-hang brackets as well, like while you're waiting for the stuff to come in. So that was the hardware portion of it. I know you had asked for that, so I can leave this back here for me with you. Thank you. So you can, oh, take a look at it.
Did you find any issues when you were hanging them that anywhere off size a little bit?
Anywhere what?
Like off size?
The banners itself.
From pre-hanging the bracket?
No, no, I think, I think the biggest thing was we wanted to get as much tension between the two rods as possible because we don't want those to come off. Because on the banner itself, you'll see, like once you get the rods on the pole, like the arms on the brackets, there are two little like eyelets in the banners and you can zip tie those banners to the bracket themselves. So that like just is more reinforcement of sturdy, sturdiness. So you do just, you want to make sure that you, you're not over, undershooting your placement, that you're trying to get it right on. We didn't have any issues, so. But that with the hardware was one thing I wanted to address. But I also wanted to address kind of our dates. Right now it's ten, because we're going to open it up to the Cambridge population, obviously, too, because we want more of the mayor, everybody to get something if they want it. And we're thinking about opening it to start with orders on March eighteenth and then setting the deadline for May first. So it's like roughly six weeks or so for everybody to kind of get their stuff in. But then if I do that, and this is more for you guys, if I, if I do that and I close the program on the first, then that means I would put orders in on the sixth with McPrinting because we locally source those for the banners themselves. I would also put the bracket order in for, obviously, brackets on the sixth. And McPrinting is typically good about getting back. They were about a week or so turnaround time, so that would put our banners back for you guys around the thirteenth or seventeenth, like between those windows of time. And I just wanted to make sure because that's going to give you, we're hoping to have everything up at Memorial Day. Obviously, that's on the twenty-seventh. We're hoping to have everything up by that date. So you would have like the week of the thirteenth, if the brackets come in, because they're like five business days. They, they're super quick. So you'd have that week of the thirteenth to start pre-hanging everything. And then you would have like all the way through like about the twenty-sixth to get the, the banners on as they come in.
Is there any possible way of getting the brackets like earlier, April-ish? Just buy a generic number of them?
We could. The thing is, is that when we, when we set up the fund for this program, obviously, the banner and the bracket is included in the cost that we ask for the person who's purchasing it to cover. So we do have some funding, but I don't know if we have enough to like, because I don't know how, what kind of interest you're going to have. I already know I've had several ask. So I look forward to be a pretty good turnout for you guys here too, like we had. So I don't know, we had a total of like ninety-something banner, brackets. And I mean, that was roughly, we did three orders. One was four thousand, two thousand and eighteen hundred, so it was like eight grand. And I don't think that we have that sitting in a fund to be able to just kind of say, here you go. I can get you started and as people start getting, like if they say they want to come to Dublin, you know, they're going to be in this area, I can start like placing orders ten at a time, if that makes sense. That way I can get you ten, you can get ten up and.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, it's kind of a busy mowing season. If it's something they can be doing earlier in the spring when it's not super mowy season time where they've got a lot of extra time to hang brackets, that would be more ideal, obviously.
Yeah, the only thing is, if you do that though, you're going to be, you're going to have those arms sticking out or you're going to have to take all those arms down and find somewhere to store them. I don't know if that's going to be a big deal, but.
That would be an issue.
You, you would just need to make sure that you have the arms.
I'm just thinking that we have a major influx of orders, you know, it'd be hard to get everything hooked up in just a short amount of time.
Especially if we're going to have to do some powder coating or whatever to get these things to go black. I mean, we're, the sooner the better.
Yeah, okay. I'll see what I can do for that. I'll talk to the chamber because our, our accounts are different. Obviously, our banner account is, is separate from our actual chamber account. I'll see if maybe we could, you know, do a little bit.
Somebody and.
Yeah, and then see what, how we can make that work for you. And then powder coating, that would be entirely up for you guys to like, you know, cover. So, so I just want to make sure that those dates work. If we open it on the eighteenth and I close it on May first, that means you're going to get your banners back roughly about the thirteenth to the seventeenth and your brackets, depending on when we order them. That would be the latest we'd order them is on the thirteenth. So I want to make sure two weeks is going to be sufficient for the labor involved. And I'm going to tell you, the population of where we are compared to where you are, we had about ninety-something in total and that was two waves that I had to reopen. That first wave was about seventy-something. I look for you guys to get ballpark fifty, sixty.
I don't think hanging the flags is the issue, it's just the brackets ahead of time.
Right.
That's my concern, so.
Right, and I get that for sure. So if we're going to say fifty, sixty, I want to make sure two weeks is going to be, okay.
It's no problem. I mean, my, my, my concern's the color and if we, if we decide to change that color, where we're going to get that done and what that cost is going to be because, I mean, we just, we want them to be the same color.
And I get it. I know when I put them up in hindsight, I mean, we did look for black ones and in hindsight I was like, oh, it won't be that bad. But they are really noticeable, like the straps are noticeable. I mean, there's always flat black spray paint from Walmart, so I mean, that's always an option too. But that, that would be something that you guys would. And if it works out, then maybe we might follow suit and do the same thing with especially the straps. So that said, if two weeks is good, because I'm getting ready to put the information out for the public relatively soon. So I want to make sure those dates work. And then also with kind of like what permissions do you want to allow? Because when I did the program in, in Cambridge, I allowed for people to kind of request if they wanted to be on a certain, you know, in a certain area, on a certain pole, on a certain corner. I tried to really accommodate that. Now, I've had a few people and one of them is, I guess, is he your president, Gene? Is that?
No, he's just one of the board members.
Okay, well, one of his family members asked because they wanted to put one in front of his home because he has a spot there. And I was like, I don't want to say yes or no because that's not, that's, I'm going to tell you right now, it is a little bit of a headache, but the payoff on that, like people were so appreciative to have like a special, you know, place or to be close to a person or, you know, something like that. So I don't want to tell people like if they're going into Dublin like, oh, yeah, absolutely. They'll be happy to accommodate you if you're like, absolutely not. That's too much.
Well, I could see us starting on that end of town. So I mean, maybe on that end of town wouldn't be an issue, but if somebody's talking on that end of town, it might be, you know, two or three years down the road before we get that many brackets up.
Probably talking about starting in the middle and work out.
That's what I, that's what I remember was middle and house. So I, I just.
Then what if people are asking for the same spot? There's not that many spots. And then you're like, what, first come, first? I mean, that's kind of.
That's what we did.
You can move them around next year. You can put them up this year, next year, we can kind of re, where you want to go and do it that way as we go on. We can do something like that, but I mean.
I hate to make it too hard, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a lot. I would just, I mean, honestly, people were really, there was only a handful of people that asked, especially requested. When I hung them up, I knew a lot of the backstory and history of those people. So I was like, okay, this is special because, you know, he would turn to go to his house every day to, you know, this corner. And so I tried to be mindful or, you know, his daughter lives right here, so I'm going to put it in front of her home. There was only a handful of people that requested that, but people are going to ask. So I want to make sure before I say, absolutely, they can do that for you.
Right, if we start in the middle, we can not even make it down to Gene's house. At least we only got five or six.
That's what I was concerned about. That's why I told her, I said, I will just get back to you. I need to get with the town and kind of figure out what they're thinking.
You don't offer it, you wait till they bring it up?
Absolutely. There's no, I'm not like, where do you want to go? The only thing that I did offer, because initially when I opened the program, the idea was to have two banners per pole. And so the only thing that I really did offer was if you wanted to be placed with somebody. So we had several that turned, you know, pairs and together, you know, place be with this person and that person. And then when we had just the singular banners, people were like, well, can you put me near this person or that person? So I just, if you can just say yea or nay on that so that I can make sure that that is.
I wouldn't advertise, but if somebody really says, hey, can we put this one here? We'll try our best to accommodate it.
Yeah, try their best. You can't promise it, but do the best.
Okay, okay. And so we.
Especially if they help hang them, that even helps even more, you know, so.
I'm telling you, we would have paid people at certain points in time to come help, for sure. So we run this program twice a year. It's, and I'm probably going to cut that down to once a year after this season. So after this Veterans Day of twenty twenty-four, I'm probably going to only do it for Veterans Day because it's too much to open it up twice a year. So do you want me to advertise for you guys also on the Veterans Day season? Like to kind of push heavily for that double or you just want once a year, like?
I'd say let's just start out with once a year so we don't get overwhelmed and see how it goes.
Okay, so if in November, people are wanting to come into Dublin, are you going to, do you want me to say, well, it's closed until next November? Do you want me to?
I mean, I guess if McPrinting's willing to print one or two at a time, I mean, that's kind of up to them, but.
Okay. We'll try to help too, because it's a lot, you know, we'll try to help. I'm not going to like volunteer Terry by any means because I don't know if he would be happy about that, but we'll try to help you out. And lastly, is just the responsibility of storing, cleaning, rehanging, that all kind of a part of it. And I want to just make sure that you guys have some, someplace that you could store these. Because I know when I talked to you guys, well, I don't think you were at that meeting, that you were like, we would prefer to, you know, kind of handle our own ourselves. And so I want to make sure that you guys have something in line to do that because I want to tell people if they are coming down, I want to make sure they're coming down. If they're going to stay up all year, if you just want to leave them up all year, that's fine too. It's just something I need to like make sure that I am putting out there when I get the information out.
We got a guy that can clean them really good, so.
Okay.
We won't have any trouble with that.
Okay, so you do want to remove them, store them, clean them and all of that too?
Yeah, I don't think we want to leave them up year round. It's just too much wear and tear on them.
It is. Well, and that, that particular vinyl that we have is, it's pretty heavy duty and you're looking at three to five years of, you know, depending on how severe the weather is and the sun and whatnot. But the longevity is roughly three.
I can see them being up the same amount of time that the flags are up, you know, like right before Memorial Day to right after, or right till Christmas decorations get put out.
Yeah, and that was our, that's our plan too in Cambridge. It's just we didn't do that this year because it was so much to get them up before then. I didn't want to like get them up and then a week later take them down. So they stayed up for this season, but they're coming down. So I want to make sure that you guys are on that same, you know, game plan, so everybody's on the same page.
I don't see a reason why not, so.
Okay.
A question to store those, is it better to roll them up or keep them open to storm? Do they recommend anything?
I would, I would roll them. I would go ahead and roll them. And I would say, we were talking about this actually a couple of nights ago, Terry and I, those arms, to make it easier on you.
Right.
You just take the pin and you'll see when you get it going, take the pin out of that arm, leave your arms in the banners and just roll the arms up in the banner. And then, yeah, like a scroll. And so you can just boom, put the pins in. You can even, and I would suggest to, because we made the mistake of using zip ties because we didn't have enough wire ties. But I would suggest wire tie instead of a zip tie with those eyelets that are in there or grommets. Just because there's more longevity with the wire tie. Those zip ties will, they'll kaput and you'll have to replace those every time. So a wire tie is my suggestion, but I think that's.
They've all got small details.
Yeah, it's a learning curve for us too. I mean, I, it just has been, it's been nice, but there's like all of these like unexpected curveballs. It's like, oh, I didn't think about that, so.
I guess the main thing is just keep us posted on how many we're talking, you know, when that comes in. Like if we're up to ten or we're up to twenty or we're up to forty, that way we can kind of plan, be ready, so.
Okay, well, I know of four right now that are planning to come to Dublin that are already hanging in Cambridge. I look for several more to kind of follow suit there too. Beyond that, I guess, do you want me just to kind of message you personally and say, hey, you're.
Me or neither one, it's fine, it don't matter.
All right.
Are the costs still the same or do they go up if you?
No, I'm not going to inflate the cost or anything. The costs are still the same. I think it was one eighty, it's still going to be one eighty. And that does provide for a small cushion of if there is an issue with, you know, one of the brackets break or a truck hits the pole and the banner gets somehow messed up. So there is a small cushion when you have collectively, let's say you had sixty flags and you have a twenty dollar cushion that gives you some money to kind of work with if a flag gets damaged. If something like that happens, just you have to reach out and let us know so that we can replace it appropriately and make sure that that's taken care of because that will all stay in that fund for that purpose. So we'll have your back that way, if that makes sense.
Sounds good.
Do you have any other questions for me or anything?
I don't. Anything from the board? Anything, Mr. Payne?
No, sir.
All right, thanks for coming. Appreciate your efforts on this, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thanks, you too.
Um, looks like Rob and Thomas is up. What you guys got to share with us tonight from Commonwealth?
Rob Belucci with Commonwealth. It might be best that these guys go first.
Let him go first?
Yeah.
For sure, Rob.
Well.
I'll be back.
What I have is contingent upon what you tell them.
Okay, all right, we've got Brandon up then.
Okay, all right, we've got Brandon up then.
Hey, I'm Brandon Watts with Clap Your Consulting. Uh, I run the income surveys in our office. I have here one of the income surveys that your residents will receive in the mail. That's kind of what they should expect here. It'd be a blue, green, or yellow piece of paper on the front there. And uh, yeah, so if you open it up here, the first thing you'll see is the town letterhead right there. A letter from the council president, just kind of stating your intentions of this income survey. You guys are trying to apply for funds for the water improvement project. And then there's a uh mail back envelope provided as well. And then you have the pillar sheet, which is the survey itself on the front. Again, just kind of the intentions of this survey on the back. The only important part really is the resident will need to look at these uh income, annual household income amounts. And whether there are, uh, how many family members are in the household and whether their annual income is above that number or below that number. They'll need to mark above or below, circle the number. And then that big square underneath it, they don't really need to fill that out. We don't need that information. The only important information is the above or below portion right there. And at the bottom, if they could just sign and date their income survey as well. Um, we, uh, the first step is to uh submit a request to O C R A, which could take up to twenty business days to get that approval. Um, I plan on submitting that request towards the end of this week, early next week. Um, after we get to full approval, then we'll be allowed to mail out income surveys. I do have your uh water customer list and residents will be um randomly selected within our.
How you do that?
What?
How you do the random selection and just.
It's just in our program. We send in some formulas on Excel sheet and it just formulates random, random stuff, so um. Yeah, so our residents are randomly selected, so you may get one, you may not get one. Um, you do need to be to mail the income survey twice before going on to the next set of list. So if you respond, that will take you off the mailing list, but if you don't respond, you may get another one in the mail. After that, then we'll move on down the list. Uh, the income survey process lasts about up to ninety uh days. Um, we have ninety days to complete the survey and submit it to O C R A. Um, typically, three to four mailings will be within those ninety days. Um, if I get a lot of responses, it could be two mailings, so. Depends if I get good responses or not.
Certain amount of number of you have to have?
So O C R A, for, O C R A to be qualified for your funds, you have to hit that fifty one percent uh low to moderate income or above.
I mean, as far as the surveys.
Oh, typically, anywhere from, I had, once I, I got entered in the numbers, typically anywhere from forty to sixty surveys.
I mean, is it even something we can leave and lay up here or lay at the post office, people can grab?
No, we'll have to do uh mailing through, yeah. We got to make sure we reach that particular household.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just trying to speed up the process, so.
Right, yeah, and I appreciate that, yeah. Um, what I will do is I'll, I'll take a picture of the survey and everything that residence is going to receive. I'll say, I'll give the mic to send to you guys. And then if you could, if you have a town Facebook page, you can make a post on Facebook, say, hey, if you receive this. This is important for the town, please fill it out and mail it back. Um, so that kind of helps in responses as well, so. Okay. But um, yeah, we, I mean, our, all income surveys we've conducted, we have finished the income survey, so. It's a matter of whether you get approved or not towards the end there, so, but, yeah, any questions about it?
Do we get a motionless bob or is it just part of the process?
It's part of the process, yeah.
So anymore than, I guess, that's it?
Oh, yeah, like I said, I'll submit the request this uh Friday or early Monday and then uh up to twenty business days. It's been averaged about. Twelve to fifteen business days to get that approval. So once we get that approval, I'll send a mailing. So we're looking probably. Probably the first week of March for residents to start receiving the income surveys.
He needs it back.
No, you can keep it for you, yeah. Anything else?
We don't mind, so.
All right, thanks for coming. Roger, name me, friend.
Does this still keep us kind of on the same schedule with O C R A?
I believe so, yes.
Timing wise, okay, that's what I needed to know.
Do you think the letter's a little confused? It says enclosed, you will find the income survey. It's actually on the, on this at least, it's on the back of that.
Okay, I, I can change one if you'd like, yeah, yeah.
Well, I just don't want them looking for some enclosure if they don't.
No, that makes sense.
You might just say it's on the reverse of this form.
I'll, I'll make that change, absolutely. Thank you.
It is a mail early populations, so. Okay, I guess you guys are up then, if you're happy with those answers.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, and uh, do you want to do more? Um, as part of the uh application. We have some fair housing posers that, posters that need to be posted here at Town Hall. If you can give that to Julia and check and post those and then have her take a picture of everything. Okay. And send it to Mike. Okay.
Picture to Mike, Julie's got it.
All right, thanks. All right, Rob, thank you guys. Good, good, Brian, thanks.
In support of their effort, we're kind of helping them with the application piece of it, making maps and whatnot. I met with Lenny before the meeting, got some questions answered about who's connected and who's not. A lot of what we're going through now stems from in-town versus out-of-town customers, so that's. That, those are the pieces that are getting tightened up. Um, beyond that, the last time. I was here with Thomas, we had presented a couple contracts in support of uh not only the O C R A project. But the bigger picture, um, water utility improvements effort. And uh, one of them was for. An asset management plan, which S R F's changed their rules over the last couple of years and we've got to certify. We being the towns got to certify that we've got an asset management plan. Um, when we make application to the S R F. Um, there's going to be some collective effort uh between Commonwealth and your, your rate consultant. Because they have a, a component of that as well. Um, but this, this uh. This asset management plan contract um allows us to get. Um, the document in sufficient form and content to be able to review with the town such that you feel comfortable. Signing the certification so that we can stay on track for the end of March to submit a formal application to S R F.
That's the twenty-five thousand dollar.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Um, it's reimbursable as a part of the project, so. When you make application to S R F and they make you a funding offer that you're acceptable with, that cost. Um, is an acceptable reimbursable project cost that would be built into the budget so that you would be. Um, at the time of closing, you would be able to reimburse yourself for any out-of-pocket expenses. Um. The uh. Do you want me to talk about both of them at the same time or?
Might as well. You got the floor, take it away.
The other one is, is, is our design, um bidding, construction engineering contract. Associated with the actual O C R A project, to do the engineering, do the permitting, um. Get it out to bid, help you uh negotiate with the contractors. Once it goes to construction, do the construction engineering, provide onsite inspection as needed. That's what that other contract is for. Um, the thought was, um, given the timing. With when we expect to uh hear from O C R A and, you know, hopefully get awarded the funds. That we could be in a position to have the design complete and permitted. Such that as soon as they say, hey, congratulations, you got your money, then we can say, hey, great, we're ready, let's go bid. And keep things moving along instead of having it fall two, three months behind. Um. This, that effort is something that I had mentioned we'll work with you guys on. Um, as far as invoicing goes, to try to time it out because, one, we always invoice in the rears anyway. So um, the, the example that I can give is, I usually process my, my clients' invoices. Um, no sooner than the third week of the month, but generally the last week of the month. But if I do my invoices in February, the last week of February, that's for work completed through January thirty first. So from a timing standpoint, my first invoice to you guys would likely be a couple, three months out anyway, so. I'll work with you on that so that we can kind of keep everything close to the point where you get awarded your funds, you actually have access to them and. We're not kind of hanging out there like that, so.
Appreciate that.
Um, timing wise, again, the thought was get approval tonight so we can start working with Lenny. On the, on the design components and keep that moving along so that come early summer, midsummer, whenever that award is announced, we're ready to go bid. Um, does anybody have any questions? I don't know if you guys have had a chance to review.
Oh, do you look at it?
I have.
Everything's kosher?
Yep, as long as you got the money to spend.
Absolutely. It's always about the money.
Yes.
I brought, I brought two clean copies too. Um, if you so choose to vote and approve on them. Um, one would get, I would take one signed copy of each back with me and leave one signed copy.
The only issue is I don't have Julie's signature on this one.
And that's, that's okay.
Okay.
Um, if you, if you go ahead and authorize it, I can ask Thomas to stop by Town Hall next time Julie's available. Um, it's.
And she may make it tonight, she said.
It's technically a testing, right? So I don't know if you want to just wait to sign it when she's present or not, that's you guys' call, but uh.
She, yeah, that's technically right. She's a testing your signature.
Okay.
Uh, but either way, once they're available and ready, I could ask Thomas to swing by and pick up some copies.
Sure. Questions? Okay, I'm satisfied with it, I'm satisfied with it.
If I assume the grant doesn't get picked, picked, funded, they still are going to owe the money, though. That would be the only hangup.
The, this one is kind of independent from the O C R A one, okay? I'm going to try to, I'm, I'm taking on a little bit of risk with the other one.
Okay.
Tied to O C R A.
So it is dependent upon the O C R A?
Correct.
Okay, but this one is not.
I'm putting a lot of faith in Clint Peter Consulting. That one's not. That one, that one is tied more so to the bigger improvements project. That we're going to go to S R F and see if they'll fund us or not.
Okay.
Just a thought, Nathan, if, if there's some issue about being tied to this and then the funding doesn't come through. I think pretty much the last hurdle is the income survey.
We just talked about that right before you left, or right before you come in, so he just left, so.
So.
And I'm confident the income survey is going to come under, I mean, where we need to be. Agree?
Yeah, I hope so.
I think, I, I can't speak for your, your grant administrator, but. The way they have been conveying it to me, it's. I hate using formality, but it, it is what it is. We got, we got customers, well, we got customers outside of town limits. And that's our target audience right now.
Do you ever have people who are hesitant about filling in a survey like that and say, I don't want to tell somebody?
Yes, sir. And I also have people that won't be very truthful when I fill it out too, whether it's an ego thing or not.
The good thing is, we're not asking them to put an actual number. Tell us what you're, you know, look at your.
And their names not on it.
Your tax return glass here and put that number down. It's just, are you above this number or you below this number?
And your grant administrator will monitor these closely. And if the first batch starts coming in that maybe looks questionable. They have the ability to kind of call an audible, okay? I learned that the hard way.
All right, any other discussion? I'll seek a motion to approve the uh assessment plan.
Make a motion except to plan as presented.
Second? One second. Okay, we got Rex and Danny.
Are you really approving the, you're approving basically your contract?
To assemble the, the plan.
Yeah, to assemble the plan. You're approving a contract with Commonwealth Engineering is going to be your first vote, is that, that's what you're voting for.
Right.
Contract, not necessarily the plan.
The plan, but.
Plan, the contract.
The funds defeat the plan.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Then I think he wants to vote on the second one, too, the second contract, but then.
That's tied to the O C R A project.
That's right.
Nope, not Julie.
That's okay.
All right, any discussion on that? Motion?
I'm making a mo. Go ahead. I'll make a motion.
All right, Danny's making a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we got to fight for a second.
Go ahead, give it to Brady.
Give it to Brady.
Give it to Brady.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll link these to you guys. They're, they're.
She gave me one already, so I don't know if.
It's up to you.
But she did not sign that one.
I'm, I'm on the Juana Beach and you guys will keep Juana Beach if you're positive.
I'm sure he could probably swing by next couple of days and grab it, so.
I'm, I'll, I'll shoot Julia a message. I'm going to be in Rush County tomorrow morning for a, a county council meeting.
Okay.
Um, so after I'm finished with that, I'll see if she's had a chance. If not, then I'm over this way.
Okay.
Four more times by the end of the week, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys got any other questions for me?
I don't think so. We'll see you next month.
Yeah, sir.
All right, Mr. Jeff Plaster, I think you're probably up next.
Okay.
You want to introduce yourself to the camera, folks, and tell why you're here.
Hello, I'm Jeff Plaster. Link added commissioner. And uh, here to talk to you guys about the help project. And uh, in particular, the Main Street redevelopment uh project. That's a, a part of the county's project list. So the county has committed a million dollars to help redevelop. The main streets of the seven uh communities that are participating with us in the help plan. And what we need tonight is for you to identify your downtown. It will, this grant program will be open to for-profit businesses. In the da, on the downtown street that you identify. I'm assuming that you're going to, you're going to choose forty. Uh, Cambridge did, East Germantown did. I, I, my assumption is that you will too.
How far off of forty can you go? Is it just right on the street? Can it be a block off?
Just, just the street. Just, they have to, they have to be.
Facing forty?
On forty.
Um, but it can go the whole length of town?
Go the whole length or any part of it that you all decide. So if you want to focus. Uh, attention on a particular area, you can choose to do that. If you want to, to make it.
Is there any, any reason to restrict the length of it?
Uh, again, only if you want to focus, if there's a three-block area that you really think of as the downtown business district. And you want to try to uh make improvements to that area that, whereas if you spread it out over. A mile, I don't know how, how far your, your boundaries go, but uh it, it may be less obvious. You've got one here, one there, one there, uh, that uh, that something is being done, so. It's entirely up to you. Again, Cambridge chose uh the, the whole breadth of, of the town. Um, East Germantown did the same. Uh, I just came from Milton and they did the same on, along one. Um, so I, I think that's probably going to be the standard, but you, you can narrow that if you choose to. If you can make a decision tonight, that would be helpful to us to, to put the package together. And be ready to get it out, the information out to uh the potential applicants. Um, but if you need more time.
Do you have a definition of what you call a business?
Uh, it would be a for-profit business, so they need to have a service or sell something or that kind of.
I mean, would you classify it as inner home? Would it fall in that category?
I, I would, I would say yes.
It's a business.
It's a, it's a.
And then what, what can the, the business owners gain from this? Just for those at home that are listening.
Uh, it's, it's the, the current design, and we don't have the final details yet. But the, the current thinking is up to a hundred thousand dollar grant. Um, out of that million then, if, if everybody took the maximum, we'd only have ten. We think that probably a lot will, will choose less than that because there has to be a twenty-five percent match. Um, and.
Matched by the property owner, not the local town?
By the property owner, uh, so they have some skin in the game. Uh, it would be. Uh, along the lines of a five-year forgivable loan, uh, at no interest. Uh, because the idea is not to uh help fund property flippers. Now, so we don't want them to have a hundred thousand dollars uh and uh clean up the property and then sell it right away. We want to encourage existing businesses or new businesses uh that would stay in business over time. So twenty percent of the grant would be forgiven each year for five years until the whole thing is forgiven. Uh, if they sell the property before then, they have to pay back the balance of uh that's not been forgiven, so.
And what types of things can they do with those funds?
Again, it'll all be spelled out, but things like uh a facade, uh if they want to redo the, the front of the building. So it looks more attractive. Uh, if they have uh upgrades that they need to make to plumbing or electrical. Uh, if they need a new roof, there's, there's a, a pretty wide variety of things they can do. Uh, there'll be a small number of things that they can't do, but uh it, it's, it's pretty flexible, so.
You might describe to them how there's a point system on as far as who actually ends up getting awarded that.
There, there will be a, a point system. Will, it'll be part of the application that will tell people how they're going to be scored. Um, we're going to ask you to appoint a person uh from town who will not be eligible to apply for a grant then. But they will help score uh the, the applications uh from Dublin. And uh, uh, we'll start that process uh once the, once the application cycle opens. Uh, we hope to be able to make awards uh late summer, early fall. And then, once the awards are made, the business would have eighteen months to complete uh the project. Remember, the ARPA funds have, have some. Remember, the ARPA funds have, have some deadlines that you need to adhere to. They have to be committed contractually by the end of this year, twenty-four. And for a construction project, they have to be spent by the end of twenty-twenty-six, so we wanna stay within those windows.
How much competition is the city of Richmond included in this as well, or just the county?
The seven communities that are participating in help, which includes Richmond.
I think, didn't you say last night, even though it's not mandatory, at least the goal is to award one applicant from each one of the communities?
At least one, assuming that there, there is an applicant for each one of the communities, and I'm not certain that there will be. Particularly with that, we actually started out the conversation that it would be a fifty-fifty match. We moved that to seventy-five, twenty-five to encourage more people to, to be involved. And we'll, we'll see how it goes, but I think it's a, a great opportunity for a small business in, in a small town in particular to find a way to, to help fund improvements to their building. Spruce up the downtown area a little bit and, and make everything nicer across the, across the county for.
And it's a great program because it's no cost to the town of Dublin, it's just helping applicants, and so.
Your only cost is to identify that, that geography and to get us a, a member of the town to participate on the scoring.
And is this gonna be a one-time grant, or do you foresee the same thing happening in the future?
I, I would suggest that it's probably a one-time deal, because it's all funded with ARPA dollars. I don't see that happening again anytime soon, but.
So if they're interested, they better get on it.
Exactly.
Okay.
We will have, we're envisioning a series of workshops to review the application process with, with business owners that are interested and work with them to, to make sure they understand what the process is and what's required. There will be stipulations that you need to work with a licensed contractor, if that's required. You'll need to have, you know, all of the, all of the paperwork through the, for building inspections and, and all of that. So, it, it, we're not just passing out checks, we're gonna.
I take it the application form is not yet available?
It is not yet available.
It's all finalized. Any other questions? Are we okay with calling downtown, one end of town to the other end of town?
I think so.
Okay. Motion on the floor?
I make a motion that we take the whole downtown to the city limit, to the city limit, to be in a grant.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor from Rex.
On forty, right?
Yeah, Cumberland Street, actually, in Dublin, so.
Second?
Alright, Bree's the second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Any opposed? Alright, motion passes, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, any questions about the, the other projects, how are they going?
There's a lot of projects going at once, I know that, it's hard to keep your head wrapped around everything, so.
Oh my gosh, we've got, we've got thirty-some projects that we're trying to, to keep straight.
Yes.
So it's, it's challenging, how's your, how's your park project coming?
I think we're just in the middle of getting new quotes right now, and I think we're gonna go live March twenty-sixth, I believe, with the, Matt, or with the community support funds.
Great, great, awesome.
I know East Germantown's really jumping on the gun, so I'm hoping they don't take all of it yet, so.
They won't, they won't.
No, it's, I think a lot of good stuff's going on, so.
Everybody's really excited, I think it's great.
Yeah.
Well, if there's anything at all I can help with, you have questions, don't hesitate to get in touch with me.
Alright, thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Have a good week.
You too, thanks.
Good to see you, Bob.
Yep. Alright, we're just gonna bounce right on to the police and fire reports, so you guys aren't bored to death for the rest of the night with us, so.
You sure?
Yep. Okay.
I'll scoot over here so that you can see everybody. Well, good evening. I'll go through the call, volume call list for the month of January, I'm hoping that everybody got a copy of it. In the month of January, there were three animal problem calls, two business checks, two community policing events, one verbal domestic, or I'm sorry, two verbal domestics, one escort, one intoxicated driver, one reported theft, five miscellaneous investigations, one mental emotional person, one personal assist, one search warrant, three calls to speak with an officer, one special event, one special patrol, one suspicious person, nine traffic stops, one unconscious or unresponsive person, one unsecure building, and one VIN check, for a total of thirty-eight. I don't know if you guys got the other two attachments with it, just to give you guys a little bit more of a broader picture on this.
I don't think so.
No, we can get you out of there.
Okay, I can give you guys these on my way out, all this does is really just kind of identify the day of the week where call volume is the highest and the hours in which that takes place. And as it stands, in the month of January, which is typical, Wednesday is still the day that we receive the most calls for service. And during the timeframe of roughly ten AM to eight PM, tends to be the hours where we receive the most calls. Outside of that, as always, if there are any issues that I can take back to the police department, to the chief, I'd be more than happy to jot those down, any concerns that you have, problem areas, I'd be happy to take note of that.
You got some information to send with you, they're having, the community clubs planning a community event, so it's in July. You can take that with you, study it, but they'll be filling the park up and potentially closing the street down and having several vendors. Kinda like Cambridge City Canal Days in Dublin, is kinda how it would look like, so.
And I'm assuming that'll, who would be the contact person?
James Lawrence.
Okay.
He's the president of the community club down there.
Let's see if, is his information here?
I can give it to you here. Two-seven-seven. Sixty-nine ninety-nine.
Alright, yeah, we'll reach out to him and see what resources he may need from us and.
And, you know, they may want you to bring the pup up and do demos, and they're trying to make, you know, a big community event out of it, so.
Wonderful, alright.
Bounce houses and vendors and games and things like that, so, I'm sure a dog demonstration would be fun, so.
Okay, I'll make note of that as well, is there anything else?
Nope, not good.
Okay.
Fine, John, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, Mr. Fire Chief?
Zero ALS, hundred and twenty-six BLS, two runs with Reed, fire runs, one smoke investigation in Dublin, and three Milton Structure Fire, which was the house that burnt down on down there by, close to me, and water was twenty-five hundred gallons.
Any questions for the Fire Chief? Everybody get a chance to read the minutes?
Yes.
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes and adjustments that Julie has presented to us. That's on this paper here. Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve the minutes and adjustments for January.
Bree's got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Rex is seconding, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, Mr. Lenny Payne, you've got the floor for probably the next half hour, so let's hear it.
So we did have two permits, both were for electric. I do have quotes, you have those for the tree removal. The demo quotes, I have not got those finished yet, I'm still waiting on a couple of contractors to get me their, their quotes for that. The bucket truck inspection went well, it passed, so we're good to go there. And then the EMA fees for Dublin, that's, that's the fees that we're adding to the electric permit, it's, it's, it's just to tag on to the electric permit, because in the past, EMA's charged us to disconnect so they can put new services in, and then charged us to come back and rehook that up again, so. We're just trying to pass some of that on to the, to the customer, to the homeowner. And then the other thing I have is the mar replacement quotes. And oh, one other thing, before I get to that, let me go back to the building. We do have the, I don't know, did you guys get the general ordinance number? This. And this is just to kinda, you know, give you guys a the cost of what you guys think as far as their increase on their permits and things like that.
Proposal, is what you're saying?
Yes.
I have another question on it too, before we get to our doctor's.
Yes.
Where do you wanna start at? Is that all you've got to open the floor with?
Yeah, for right now, let's get this out of the way, 'cause Bob's got questions, so we need to.
Well, this might take, well, why don't we wait for that, 'cause it's gonna have, might have more extensive discussion.
Okay.
And some of the other things. On State Street, I do have some input on State Street. It did sell a tax sale, Wayne County is now the owner of that property, so we can get to look to them to require anything that might need to be done for them before you start doing any removal. And, but if you want to, you have until tomorrow to redeem the property, if you wanna, if you wanna become the owner of the property, you can do that for the small cost of two thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars thirteen cents times a hundred and ten percent if you want to redeem it from the county at this moment.
So they bought it a tax sale because taxes have not been paid, is that correct?
That's right, and nobody else bought it, so therefore.
So, how about the money we've got invested in it at this point for boarding it up?
For boarding it up, I'm, I would suggest with it now being the county's property, might be a little hard pressed because it's not a, a personal property owner, but I think you do have a good leverage over the county's head on anything else need to be done. But at this moment, I think I would hesitate before putting any other cost in it, because as of February af- if nobody redeems it on February the seventeenth, it's when a deed would actually go to the county, and at that time, they become responsible for any upkeep or anything else necessary that they would be much easier to impose those requirements on than somebody else. That's just my thought.
Basically, you're saying we don't need to worry about tearing it down right now because we don't have ownership of it?
That's right, we don't have ownership of it, and it's now gonna throw a hurdle in, originally, had it still stayed as private ownership, we could at least attempted to recover our cost by forcing a sale of that, but now because there's gonna be a new owner of it, I would hold off and see how, what the county's plans on it to let them incur that cost rather than us trying to incur it and then try to get reimbursed. 'Cause you, you know, they, they've got a big pocketbook, I mean, that's gonna be easier to get at than some other burden.
I guess the question is, you know, what, what's the next step? How long do we wait and keep looking at it?
I would say, after, because this says that if no one redeems on the fourteenth, they will request a tax deed on February the nineteenth, that at that point, let me contact, let's hope we can deal just with their county attorney and some of the other office holders, and see what their plans are for the property, let them know that it's been deemed an unsafe building, and it'll continue to be deemed that under their ownership, absent them doing something, and put the burden on them to maybe even tear it down.
Okay, sounds good.
Just longer wait, if it works, it works, you know.
And it may save us from having to front some costs.
Right. Lenny, hold that thought.
I just wonder, you know, gonna be another sixty, ninety, a hundred days or whatever, but.
Well, I mean, I think they're gonna be fine with us doing, keeping it safe and doing whatever, and become good weather, I think they may be able to do it just as quickly as we were going to with any of our quotes, you don't have any quotes yet for the tear down?
I, I do, I have, I have two.
I just probably, what are these, what are you looking at so far?
Just, I have one local and then one from Indianapolis, but I didn't, I don't think I printed one from Indianapolis, 'cause he was like super high, so.
What kind of ones are you talking about?
Ballparkers.
The ones, ballpark probably, one's nine and the other one was eighteen thousand, so. One's nine thousand, one's eighteen.
That was them providing the dumpster?
Yes.
Did you say the first one was nine?
Nine.
Nine.
So, should we wait till they take ownership and then send them an invoice for the material we used, or do we have, should we eat that, or what do you think?
Let me talk to the county first.
I would wait and hope that they'll end up tearing it down.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just thinking the cost, we've already got into it so far.
Applied woods are more.
Right, but if they're gonna tear it down and we're kinda just with that little bit of cost, it might be worth not pushing your luck and just kinda leave it alone?
That's what I would say, too.
And hope they absorb all that rest of it?
'Cause our cost would just be material, it's been our own labor and so forth, yeah.
Like, it was about three hundred so far?
Julie told me it was two hundred and eighty for the plywood.
If we get that property cleaned up, then we'd only incur two hundred and eighty dollars.
Five hundred dollars, yeah.
So, my question is, do I stop doing what I've been done?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we don't.
I just wanna make sure because
Yeah.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go clean anything else.
We don't want you getting arrested for trespassing either, so.
But that, that's unlikely, the county, the county's not gonna complain now, so. The more we do, they would be happy.
Yes, I'm sure.
So you guys have your tree removal quotes. And I just got two of those, that's the only two that I could get.
I'm good with the T and M quote.
Did you have a conversation with Julie prior to the meeting about making sure she had funds and her allotted funds she wanted to use?
I did not get a chance to talk to her about that.
I mean, she never told me they didn't, 'cause I mean, she knew it was on the agenda from last month, so. I don't know which fund it would come out, that was what I'm saying, at this point in time. I could just assume Edit would be an ideal place, probably.
So you want to table it, or just get the information from Julie and find out?
We can pass it with the understanding, or if we don't have the money, she'll let us know. Okay, it's on the backside. Those are the other. So we got a price of thirty-six seventy-five from Crosscut, and a price of twenty-two fifty from T and M. So there is quite a big difference. And this is full removal, correct? Stump and all?
Yes.
Well, it says stump, stump cleaned up, debris, I'm just getting debris.
Now, my next question, I opened up for discussion on the board, would there be any reason that we would want to keep that stump for a decorative purpose? Carpeted it in or something, like we did down the park?
Let's get rid of it while we're getting rid of it, I think.
Alright, motion to approve the quote from T and M for twenty-two fifty?
I'll make a motion.
Dan Wicker made a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bree, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, assuming Julie is fine with the funds, I don't think there'll be any issues since we're at the beginning of the year. Motion passes on that, alright, I think we're up to mowers?
Yes.
We've got a lot of mower quotes to look through here.
Yeah, I, I got as many locally as I could and stayed within, you know, that probably fifty mile radius.
I just wanna just take the one at the beginning and just kinda go down through it briefly and say, this is this, and this is that, and this is a, what we're looking at for those of us that don't understand what model seventy-two fifty-nine is and that kind of stuff, yes.
And I do have I do have a yes. Just wanna look here, it's these two that we have the quotes on.
No pictures?
One's a gas, one's a diesel. I'm leaning more towards the diesel, we're gonna get more time out of it. Efficiency, just, you know, that mower's, that diesel engine's gonna last twice as long as the gas.
Which mower you wanna get rid of? Explain what you wanna trade in, stuff, so we're.
Start with, tell us how many mowers we currently own and what they are.
We have three, we have a seven-twenty grasshopper, and we have a X seven-twenty John Deere. The John Deere's a tractor, it has a, a snow thrower. Um, the John Deere's a tractor, it has a, a snow thrower on it, and. The s- snow blower, the cab, and the sprayer, it has a weed sprayer attachment to it as well. Um. So. The. To trade, I mean, we don't use the tractor other than just spraying weeds, that's all we use it for, I mean, that's all we've used it for, for the last two years is. No, we don't mow with it, I mean.
She doesn't have a belly mower on it?
It's got a mower on it, but we don't use it to mow, no, we don't use it to mow. It's just, it's slow. Huh?
What's the reason?
It's just slow, it's a tractor, I mean, it's, you know, it's. It's just a regular conventional tractor, it's not a zero turn, it doesn't have the speed that. You know, the other, the other two mowers, that the other two mowers that we have have.
The other two zero turn?
Yes, both the other two are zero turns, one's a mid-mount and the other one's front mount. Um, the, the front mount is a lot nicer when you're mowing around the park stuff, you can get right up underneath it. You know, you can get closer with it than you can the mid-mount. Um, these mowers are both front mounts that we're getting quotes on.
You don't ever get in any high weeds that you really need that belly mower to raise it up, but you can't do with the zero turn?
No, you can raise the mower, you can raise the mower deck up on the.
Even on the zero turn?
Even on the zero turn, on the front, yeah, yeah, even on the front mount, you can, you can raise that up.
So we got a grasshopper at zero turn, and a John Deere at zero turn, and a tractor, this is John Deere.
Yeah.
Good, and what are you looking to get rid of?
The, the John Deere and the grasshopper.
And our tractor.
Tractor.
Getting rid of two, going to two.
Yeah, getting rid of two, going to one.
Now, will we still be able to sweep off sidewalks?
Yes, we have a side, we bought for the grasshopper, uh, last year, we never got to use it, we did use it this year, it worked out well. Um, it will fit right on the new mower, so we'll still be able to do sidewalks and things like that with it.
About the weed spraying?
The weed spraying, we, we'll still be able to spray weeds, we just. We're gonna have to look into a sprayer, I'm not gonna go with a grasshopper sprayer because of the amount of money they are. Um, you can buy a mower for what they want for a sprayer, so, um, you know, we'll look into, there's other options for sprayers for that mower. So that's what we're looking into that are like.
Oh, other attachments that aren't the grasshopper brand?
Yes.
And what, what is our sprayer now, is it like a pole behind, or is it on to the mower? Okay. So you think selling it would outweigh the cost of buying the new attachment for the grasshopper?
Yeah.
So what is the lowest cost on the diesel?
The lowest. Is from the OCI. They're giving us forty-eight hundred dollars trade-in for both mowers. And the attachments, and it'd be twelve-three fifty.
Now, the twelve thousand three fifty is for both new purchases or per mower?
Per mower, we're only, we're only.
Only buying one.
We're trading two and keep, you know, buying new one.
So do you think going from three to two's gonna be sufficient for us if one of them breaks down, or we have an issue?
Yeah, I think we'll be fine. Cause that's what they had before, and they used two for years.
What kinda life is left on the John Deere, is the growth term that you wanna keep at this time?
The John Deere. Well, it's at a point where we're putting money into it, you know, just, so it's just, it's just one of those things. Probably a year, you know, we may get another year out of it, hopefully, maybe two.
In your study, did you give any idea what kinda trade-in that one might have on it?
No, I did not, I did not go into that, cause it was hard enough to get them to give me the quotes on the other two.
Do you think that trading value was reasonable?
Yes.
In your opinion?
I do. I mean, we could sell them both and probably get more, but we're gonna have to. We're, we're gonna have to really work to sell them to get more out of them. You know, I mean, we're gonna have to, I know most of the time, we just have, we just have an auction, you know.
You'd have to put them out for bid, yeah.
You know, most of the time, we would have to have an auction and put them out for bid and go from there, but. You know, and then you may, you may wind up only getting two grand out of them, you know, so. I'm pretty comfortable with the.
The, the mower, you're, not the tractor, but the mower you're trading in, what's its life? Would it be beneficial to keep it as a spare versus getting a couple of grand for it, or?
Um. As far as like the, the zero turn? Are you talking about the grasshopper, or are you talking about the John Deere?
The grasshopper.
The grasshopper.
The grasshopper, um. Everything's new in the motor on the grasshopper, the only problem with the grasshopper is, is that if one of the drive pumps go out, then it's done. Cause they're obsolete, you can't get them. So if one of the drive pumps go out of that mower, that mower, you can't get one for it.
Now, what was the actual specific trading value for that?
Uh, the highest was, uh.
Or did it just combined into the package?
The highest was a thousand dollars for that mower.
Well, that's for the tractor and the grasshopper.
No, I'm talking about like from OCI, did they break down the trade-ins?
No, no, he just took both and, let me make sure I'm telling you right.
It is interesting. I'm just saying, if they're only gonna give you eight hundred dollars, is even we're trading it in, like?
Yeah, I get exactly what you're saying.
Yeah. Well, the, the thing is, is. I'm trying to look to see if anybody else give me a, so. If you look at this one, they give, they're giving a thousand for the grasshopper and, um. Forty-eight fifty for the seven-twenty. So they're giving fifty-eight fifty for the trade-in.
Oh, I see it right here.
Yeah.
Does grasshopper not make that part anymore, or is that why you say you can't even forget?
Yeah, yeah, they don't, you can, you can buy them on eBay, but you're buying a used part at that point, so.
What year is the grasshopper seventy-six, or is it?
No, it's a ninety, it's a ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight, okay.
It's a ninety-eight.
Can you know what year the tractor is?
The tractor is, I think the tractor's twelve years old, I wanna say.
Sound about right?
It's got, um. It's got a thousand, I think it's like around twelve hundred hours on it or something.
Is there currently anything wrong with the grasshopper?
No, not currently.
And you do use it as of now?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've mowed it for the last two years, I.
It's probably out of this forty-eight hundred, maybe eight hundred.
I, I can see us just keeping the grasshopper out at the wellhouse and you mowing out there and just leaving it out there, and keeping the other two maintenance here in town.
Yeah, well, I mean, like I said, I mean, we've, we've rebuilt, I mean, I've rebuilt the motor completely on that thing. The lane, it hasn't been changed on it, is the piston and rings, and that's because.
You know, obviously, we understand when it goes, it goes, but you know, you may find an aftermarket part or something, who knows, but.
Yeah, I mean, and, and you know, I mean, I, I think that's a, it's probably a low price, but if you're going to, if you go look on Facebook right now. You can find those seven-twenty's all day for eight to twelve hundred dollars. You know, so, I mean, that's, that's, that's what I'm based off of, you know, I mean, I, I got, I look at Facebook and see what they're offering, and that's. When they first started this, they was only gonna give us, I think, two grand for everything. You ain't gonna get it for that, you know?
Yeah.
Um, so then I went back to them and told them, I said, we're not, we're not gonna trade in for that price, you know, we can't. It would be foolish.
Um, do you know what the, uh, warranty is from OCI?
Three, oh, that spec sheet said three years, that, that.
Oh, on this?
I'm assuming that's the manufacturer's.
Okay, they don't have anything above the beyond that?
No. No, and I'm pretty sure they're, they are the lowest. Seventeen and eighteen, yeah. They're almost two thousand dollars cheaper than the Apple Farms and. Dennis Equipment there.
Oh, yeah, cause this one's only giving you six hundred for the grasshopper.
Yes.
Yeah, now I see it.
And the, um. Dennis Equipment there, eighteen, yeah, eighteen-six for the. The diesel. Yeah.
Well, what if you go back to these folks, um, see if they can deduct the, uh, grasshopper and see if their figures change, which I'm assuming they will.
Yeah.
And we can vote on this again next month, cause I don't think we're quite to mowing season yet, so.
Right.
Assuming their quote's gonna last at least thirty days.
Yeah, yeah, cause I asked him, and, um, he said that they would definitely honor, you know, usually it's within twenty days, they, they said, but they would definitely honor it for thirty. Um, so the other guys are just, you know, would they have their expiration on them? Like this one says.
And you might sweet talk them and they might leave the price like it is, cause they won't have to worry about trying to get rid of that grasshopper, you know, it may be a favor to them, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
And then what about, um, um, this case, this, um.
Apple farm.
Apple farm?
Yes.
The, I'm just not reading, ninety-six seventy, I'm just not coming up with their math here.
Well, he took the, uh, look again, that price right there off of there.
So they're eighteen-nine, and then you take the, uh, it would be fifty-eight fifty off of that price.
He's gonna like get how. Um, the, the fifteen thousand.
Oh, okay, they're giving you a list price, and then they're like trying to say they're saving you four grand on purchase price.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Because this one looks pretty close.
They're close.
Because this one, they broke it out, so they're giving you forty, forty-eight fifty for the tractor. So that would be fifteen-five twenty-five minus forty-eight fifty. Ten thousand six seventy-five.
Is that for the gas?
That is for the.
Just, just, just here's just the gas.
Yeah, it's the thirty-five horsepower, isn't it?
Okay, that's the gas.
That's the gas.
But trade is already on there, so.
Yeah, it's a fifty. This should be fifty.
Well, I added a thousand, I added that thousand dollars back, like to keep the grasshopper.
Looks like to me, fifteen thousand, count the trade-in.
No.
We're down to barn, you guys, we already gave you the trade-in value up on top up there.
No, that, that's what my question was.
There's, there's no trade-in value. There's no trade-in value listed on there. I wrote it in there because that's what they, that's what they told me. So they, they're giving us a thousand dollars for the seven-twenty and forty-eight hundred for the John or something.
And then the other one was ninety-nine hundred. So, these two, Apple and OCI are right at the same.
Yes.
So.
They're really close.
I think you could figure out, like, like you said, what the split is of that forty-eight hundred on OCI, because you already have the split from Apple. And then we could go between those two, both between those two, right?
Yeah.
How far is this Apple from here as far as servicing?
Um, Webster.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at these Ohio addresses, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I don't know where they're really from.
Yeah, no, they're, they're from Webster and.
And OCI is Monsey.
Yeah, OCI is Monsey.
Okay, you understand what we're looking for, if you can find out and let us know next month?
Yes, sir.
We should be able to get you on the way for the mowing season.
So I will talk with OCI and Apple.
Yes.
Really work him over.
Yeah.
Have a discount.
Well, OCI, I had to work him over anyway to get what I got out of him, so. And you know, if, if there's a cost for shipping or whatever, I'm sure you guys can take care of that, so.
Yeah.
And now there's.
All right, you want your little pamphlet back, I'm assuming?
I do keep it, I don't need it. If you want it.
I'll keep it with my pile unless you need it. All right, I guess we're up to your general ordinance two dash twenty twenty-four, looking at increases in, uh, permit fees.
My question, right now, in your code of three point three oh nine is blank, so all of this is gonna be filled in, the, the new three point three oh nine. And I'm curious, what is the primary purpose of this ordinance? Is it just to increase the fees? Is it to add an inspection element to what you're doing with the building permit? Is it to give more detail of what's involved in the inspections, or all of the above? Well.
All of the above.
All of the above, okay. Because there is, so, I mean, if you look, the, the inspections have went up, the number of inspections went up. Um, you know, a single inspection fee's fifty bucks. So if you go three inspections, it's a hundred and fifty.
Okay, so that, that was another one of my questions, that maximum is for all fees together, is that right?
Yes.
And what happens if, like, if there's an electrical improvement that's part of a family dwelling, is that gonna be a separate permit fee? So, or do all these just stand alone, um, or could you fall into a couple different categories on this?
Okay, so the. I, I'm gonna say that it would probably just all, all stay the same, so. If, if it's a one inspection, you know, single inspection is, I'm looking at the electrical, hang on. That, so you're talking about the tap, or you're talking about the improvement? It could, any, any of them. Okay, well, the tap is based off of our, what it cost us for IMPA. To do that.
But, you got your truck.
Right.
Inspection, you can start doing stuff, but if, you know, as long as it don't.
As long as I have the tools.
Well, I know, you gotta get tools now.
So.
Yeah, that's a big pain for crippers.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so.
So like in that instance, then somebody would be responsible for that line item, but also with the three inspections for if it's a. Family dwelling.
No, that include, that would include that for the.
Which would include which?
So if it's the electrical tap fee. And if it's new, new construction, then it would be the four eighty.
But you would, would you still have three other inspections required?
No, it's just one, you can read it right there, it says just one, one inspection.
We're relying, which we did.
Over required inspection? There's a three, it starts at the top there, three, three, five, five, three, three, one, three.
Right.
Yeah, that's one, the one.
Uh, uh, okay, yeah, I.
But is this on the same job, or is this within the permit year?
Well, this, this would be the.
Cause I mean, they might have three or four different phases of their project.
Yeah, but this is for just the electrical tap.
Just the tap.
Okay, but if they're gonna have an electric, I, I, I'm adding on, well. Or even if I'm building a new home. So I'm building a new, one-family dwelling, and it's gonna require an electrical tap. Do I just pay for the electrical tap? Don't you also wanna have a building permit for the new home?
No, you have to have a building permit for the new home.
Okay.
And electrical inspection on top of the tap.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
So that's, that, and. That would be, so you're still gonna have, for that, you would still have your. Permit fee, and then you would have the. Cost of what that cost to do that is the four eighty.
And are you treating a, a building permit fee is one in the same as an inspection fee in a way, so?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause that, that just pays for the inspection. So if you're doing, you know, for instance, the Dollar Store, I mean, I was down there and inspected probably fifteen times.
And I see where it gives you the ability to increase the number of inspections, and I'm not sure, how do you increase the number of inspections by fifty percent? If right now, three are required, you go up to four and a half, but that.
Well, it's just, that's that's just a cap, that's just a cap that we put there, that can change, all these numbers can change, this is, this is just a base. It's just a draft that for these guys to see and figure out where they wanna go, which direction and what they wanna charge them.
Because I never have to enforce it or interpret it, I just wanna get it clear, clean as possible too. And I'm not sure, that ten percent of installation cost, I do, Julie asked if I was gonna have a problem with that, and I think I I do, um. I mean, that could get outrageously high, couldn't it?
Well. Yeah. Well, but it's got a, it's got a maximum on it of two fifty.
Yeah, two fifty for a roof sounds insane to me.
So that maximum is still gonna override the ten percent?
Yes. If it goes to that high, it's ten percent up to that, and then it doesn't go any higher. And like I said, these are just numbers that, you know, we throw together to. You know, cause it was brought up about increasing the permit fee and so forth, so that's what these numbers were thrown out there for.
Okay, I'm confused, so this old sheet says nineteen ninety-six.
Yep.
Then this one says oh one, but are this, so are these set from oh one, or? This is ninety-six.
Now, this, that that date's probably just from the old, from the old sheet, that she just used the same format, just to throw that together, I'm sure.
Okay, these are new, new fees.
Yes.
Not from.
Two thousand one, no.
And then I don't know what this one is.
This is what current, what we charge for uh everything that we get in the office.
So I think we need a, like, a current column and then a increase column.
Okay.
Cause I can't really follow, like, right now, one or two dwelling is sixty dollars, and now we're saying it's a max of one fifty.
Yeah.
And some of the language from the old, like, I'm not sure, we don't have, I don't even know what they mean by zoning president. I'm assuming maybe plan commission, plan commission president, and I'm not sure they have to sign off, I mean, it can be initiated by the plan commission. But this is just being initiated directly by council, so you wouldn't need that, I don't know who the building safety commission is, so some of that other wording. I, let me tweak this for a final version of the ordinance.
And and that's, that's, that's why this is just.
It's just a draft.
It's just a proposal, and it's and it's for you guys to look at and figure out what you wanna see and what you want out of this. And then we can go back and fix whatever needs fixed and change whatever needs changed.
On the water tap fee for new construction, that fifteen hundred, is that basically somebody that's never had water on that property, and that's the price of the meter and everything?
That's the price of the meter, that's the price of the line, that's the price of the tap, I mean, that that's, that's what it cost us to put that in.
And that's only going up a hundred and fifty dollars since twenty thirteen.
For tap fee.
Right, that doesn't sound like very much.
Yeah, and none of the uh, I don't, I don't know when the last time they increased the permit fee. I don't know when that building permit fee was increased.
Been all the way since I've been here, yeah, I mean, ninety.
It's been the same price for years.
Yeah.
There it is.
I think, you know, we're in a, going in the right direction, but we just need kinda.
Yeah, a little more.
Detailed.
Clarity.
Yeah. Especially go for Bob to understand what we're trying to want to do and writing everything down, so.
Right, this was just, like I said, this was just a proposal for you guys to see, kinda get everybody's feet wet and headed in that direction of where we wanna go with it.
Yeah, I I agree with Bob, I don't like the ten percent thing, I don't. Cause then what they're, you're gonna trust them to tell you the cost, I don't know, I don't.
They have to, so whenever you get a permit, you have to submit the cost of that project when you get your permit.
Right, but if they know it's ten percent. But if they say it's a four thousand dollar job, it's a ten thousand dollar job.
Well, you're gonna get that anyway.
Well, as far as Wayne County is concerned, it's just a flat rate.
I like a flat rate.
They don't charge, you know, material costs, basically, so. At least, you know, what I deal in my living, so.
That's why I question, cause I mean, the town for years did it, ourselves need to charge extra for that stuff, so.
And I would guess you, if two fifty's your maximum, there'd be so many times you weren't even getting up to that ten percent, probably.
And I guess my other question would be, I mean, you talked about going to the Dollar Store fifteen times, and we've only got three down. For, you know, industrial warehouse, so, you know, you may wanna up that number, so.
And I don't wanna say you have the power to double the number of inspections, rather than saying you could increase it by fifty percent. Cause there would've been an example, you had to at least double it.
Yeah.
You don't wanna limit yourself.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and that's the other thing, you know, I mean, the town, the town pays me. To go do these, and then, you know, if it takes an hour to go do an inspection, then they're not even getting what my wages. You see what I'm saying?
I mean, I like a lot of these, the just the general fifteen dollars going up to fifty, I think that's pretty kind of in line.
So let's look at the other side of this court, i- if the person doesn't get a permit at all, and they get caught, then what's the cost of that?
Well, there's fines down here, I was trying to look at, I didn't know if they were.
I mean, a ten dollar fine.
Yeah, it been updated and.
I'd pay ten dollar fine before I would pay a fifty dollar inspection fee, you know, so we gotta look at that side too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's, there's a lot of things that have to be looked at with this.
But this is just to kinda get everybody's mind going in that direction, get you thinking about what you wanna do, cause it ain't the wind up end of it all, it's uh, it's up to you guys.
Yeah, I I do know, when we talk about fines and ordinances, we gotta really talk about like the fire side of it, because. We have illegal burns in Cambridge Police Department, so they have nothing to go off of, they don't have any ordinance they can use. I mean, even though we've got an ordinance fee here, apparently their computer system doesn't allow them to do a city ordinance for us, you know, it has to be at whatever the state, or whatever's in their computer system, so. I I know that's another issue as well. So I think for, I'm assuming Bob, if we were to issue one of these fines, like for an open burn, it would have to come from a town employee, it couldn't come from the quote-unquote police department.
Um, no, I think there's someplace in our code that gives the police officer and actually each one of you the ability to find a person.
Well, I know they're having a lot of struggle finding that on their laptops in their car when they issue these fines.
Yeah, there might be a practical matter, but legally they can do it.
Well, cause I think they got rid of paper tickets, and that's what it boils down to.
Yeah.
You might check with other towns and see what they charge, like, you know, Centerville, see what they for.
I can tell you for Newcastle.
Yeah.
To put a new water line in, the permit for that was a hundred and fifty bucks.
And did any of them ever distinguish between you get your permit for a amount, and then pay on top of that an inspection fee? So there's actually, it's a two-pronged thing.
Yeah, they.
So that's, I know Newcastle, it's an extra forty-nine dollars every time they come and inspect, so if I come and I inspect, and it doesn't pass, they gotta fix it, I come back, it's another forty-nine dollars.
Right, cause it's their fault they didn't pass.
Yes.
So if they pass, oh, you're good to go, but you didn't have your stuff together, you need to pay me again.
Yeah, because I just, I just went through that personally.
Would there ever be an instance where somebody was getting a building permit and no inspections would be required? So that, but we still need a building permit fee.
Well, for.
A separate apart from any inspection.
The, no, because even if somebody plants a tree, we need to have a permit for that, because we need to be able to go see where they're putting the tree to make sure they're not planting it under a power line.
I have to get a permit to plant a tree?
Well, you could, we don't.
That's just a.
Land fee permit, now, there are some big cities that do that.
We don't do that.
No, we don't do that.
And I don't want to.
No, no, I don't either, but I'm just using that as an example.
That's why we have, you know, permits to have inspected, have checked out.
And right now, if you're anything, before there's a construction alteration or repair of any dwelling or. Structure, if the cost exceeds five hundred dollars, you have to get the building permit, is that still a good number to use?
No. I think. I don't, I think it should be higher than that, you can't do anything at your house for five hundred dollars.
Well, I know, when we done pump test, or when I done pump test, it was stated as pass or fail. So in other words, if you had to come back and re-pump it, it was gonna be another, the same what it was the first time. But it stated pass or fail, it was this much money.
Uh, I know Cambridge, their fees are really low and they need to increase some, so I could get a copy of their list. And that would, and see like the dates of their prices, and then maybe compare it to the dates of our prices, and that would at least give us a local.
Yeah, well, I mean, and that's, that's what I'm saying, this.
This, if you wanna take a drawback extra, that's up to you. This is just to, I, just, just to get everybody going in that direction.
Yeah.
You know.
Open our eyes up, see what's there.
Yeah.
I feel like check with other towns to make sure that, you know, most of them, you know, that we're not being outrageous, where nobody wants to build anything here.
What do you think ought to be the floor for, before you need a building permit then? You're right, I mean, today, you can almost just hang a new door, a closet door in your house and spend five hundred.
Oh, yeah, my front door was one of five hundred dollars.
Yeah, so should you've gotten a building permit?
I, that's whatever.
Yeah. Thousand dollars, fifteen?
I would be interested in seeing what Wayne County does, you know, especially if we're talking about annexing and stuff, it would be ideal, that we're. You know, apples to apples with somebody ten feet away on this property line, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think we should have this, but with current and proposed.
Yeah.
And the date of current.
That paper you have there that shows the old?
I've never seen that.
Well, now I'm confused because.
I've never seen that.
There's no dates on here, I don't know what, are these from twenty two thousand one?
It looks like it was passed in twenty two, or two thousand one, although I don't remember.
Yeah, we've raised them over the years, but I can't.
Is that the paper that's up here by the window?
Uh huh.
Okay, I've seen it, I've just not looked.
Yeah, we're looking.
I'm not ready.
But I think, yeah, the date and the price, and then the new proposed price, and then go from there. I mean, three dollars for a notary, I was like, wow, that's cheap.
Yes.
I used to charge ten, twenty years ago.
And then my next question is, do we need to send you to any training or anything to have a paper to back you up for these? Um, issuings and inspections and so forth.
Training, I have seen it around here for, you know.
Well, there's, there is training classes, but they're like. They're like week, week long, or, you know, three days out of the week for six months, or, you know, there are those out there.
It's always good to have a piece of paper hanging on the wall that says, I can really do this stuff, so.
Yeah.
Especially whatever goes into the courtroom, which I'm sure Bob can attest to. Okay, so we'll get some more information and keep walk, keep talking about that, so.
Yeah, and that's, and that's really all this was, that's all that was about.
That was a good start.
Yeah, it is.
To, to get a start and headed the right direction, and hopefully I didn't confuse everybody too much, but.
No warning on that.
No warning on that, so get used to it.
All right, anything else for you, sir, uh, what did you find out specifically on the bucket truck, was there like a rating, was there a percentage, is it just pass or fail?
No, just pass or fail, everything was good, no issues, they they tested the, they tested the arms, they tested everything, it's all good.
Good.
They tested our sticks, they were good.
Gloves?
Gloves, they didn't test those, cause they failed from just opening up and looking at the dates.
So you need to buy new gloves?
Yeah.
Okay, let's get that done then.
There used to be some gloves in the vault back here, but they're probably outdated too.
They're outdated already.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you got, they're, I think they're fifteen years old.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably true, we put them back there and never used them.
Okay, then let's get some prices for those, so if you're pulling meters and so forth, we can make sure everybody's safe.
I have a pair of, I have a pair of um. Electric, electrical rated gloves for that. Yeah, I've got a pair of those already, that's, that's one of the first things that I ordered when I started. And they're still in good shape, cause I just use them for that stuff.
Do each of you have, or just one pair?
Both of them.
Okay, all right.
Anything else? Last time, last call.
I don't think so, I don't know what I did with my agenda, but I don't think so, I think that's it for me. Unless you guys have anything?
Well, we got this AMP of fees for the government preschool, does that go with what he's doing, or is that separate?
That's that email, that's what they charge an hour for the pickups.
That's what they're charging us to to do that, and we've just passed that off to the, to the customer now, rather than us having to pay for it.
We'll just pass all of them.
Yeah.
All right, uh, the clerk's report, but the clerk is not here to report, so what you see in front of you as far as the uh fuel logs and so forth.
I didn't see anything that jumped out.
Uh, you wanna give, uh, do you have a definition on the fleet cards, how that's going, working out?
Yes, we have those already, we've already used them, um, and we couldn't use, we couldn't go the route the fire station is, cause we don't. We don't spend that much money in fuel, so, um, so we had to go with the marathon card, so it is what it is.
And that works at any marathon in the country?
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming so, yeah.
So you have your handy notes, you can stop at one and, okay, great, and then there's a card per person, or in each vehicle?
Card per person.
Okay, so you gotta carry that with you?
Yep, and then whenever, so whenever you get your fuel, you write your mileage at the top of that receipt, and um you sign it, and date. Whole nine yards, so it's, it's all on there, so it's, so it's, just makes things easier for her, now she can just look at it and say, okay, guys.
Card to the pump.
Yes.
You ask for an ID number, okay.
So if somebody steals a car, they still can't use it.
Right, right, good.
But you put the mileage and everything on the case, so.
Yeah, we write the mileage on the receipt.
Well, we go in the pump, why we write the receipt?
We don't put it in the pump.
Oh, okay, I thought you said we put it in the pump, okay.
No, we write it on the receipt.
Put a pin number.
Put a pin number in that pump.
But not mileage.
Okay.
So no issues with that then?
Nope.
And uh, how much fuel is left up here, is it empty?
Oh, it's empty, well, I mean, whatever's in the bottom of it.
So we don't need to worry about, whatever, so.
No, we can, we'll probably have to take a pump and try and pump the rest of it out, or something, I don't know, but.
And then do we own that pump, and that tank?
Yeah, I believe that.
Tank, yeah.
So we need to find a way of disposing that, or?
Use it for something else, I don't know.
Well, we s- we could, we could transfer that over to a diesel pump, because it is a nicer pump than the one we're using for diesel, and it's more secure than the one we're using for diesel, so. And we can be, keep better track of our diesel that way, too.
Yeah.
Good deal. I believe what we're asking for, the next is, Julie needs authorization to open up a separate bank account that is specific for the uh. Pay through necessity grant, I can't even say that word right, and uh, I don't know the details honestly, but I believe that is part of the uh. Park grant for the upgrades we're looking at down there, and uh, I don't know. Does she need a separate bank account or a separate line item on our accounts, I don't understand.
I don't know, like.
But anyway, I guess she's looking, because it's asked for signatures, so I'm assuming she needs a motion to approve her opening up a new bank account for that particular grant.
I'll make a motion, we'll give her the authorization to open account, separate account.
Second.
Better write that now, cause we'll be timed out on our timer. So Rex made the motion, Bree seconded the motion, all favor I?
All right.
Any opposed? Like I said earlier, um, I believe it's March twenty-sixth that that will go live online, um, seeking. Other funds from businesses, local people, to help with the park upgrades, uh, but the big stickler is the town cannot put money. Uh, but the big particular is the town cannot put money towards that. That's one of the requirements, so we have to seek it from wherever else we can seek it from, but just not from the city or the town, so. And that's what you're seeing a lot on the news right now with East German Town for their playground. It's basically the exact same thing for us, except for they got to do theirs first, and ours will be later on, so. But, uh, they've really, the publicity is really picking up on these projects, so. Um, and I think, when I talked to the lady, and I can't remember her name, our plan was to have it during like the solar eclipse time, when everybody from out of town was gonna be here in the community, and tried to get some fundraising through those out of towners to help, because it would be during that, uh, time period of April eighth, when the solar eclipse movement is going on, so we can hopefully spread the word and maybe get some publicity and some donations from out of towners would be ideal, so. So that's about all I can tell you on that. Um, the new business, we have a new contract with, uh, Michael Stuckey. Um, he takes care of the legalities of the water plant. And I believe this price went way down, is that correct? Do you remember? I think it was a thousand a month.
It started, it started at a thousand, then it dropped to five hundred whenever I started doing the test.
Okay, so now he's raised it then?
Yeah, he's, it's, it was, it's been in the five hundred for over two years, and, and he's, he's increased it because.
Okay, I was thinking we were still paying a thousand a month. It was five hundred when you started helping him.
Yeah.
Okay.
Once you went down.
Six hundred, so it's one up a hundred. How close do you think you are to passing the water test? And if you do pass the test, will we still have to use Michael?
We'll still have to use Michael, so I have to get the next one down.
Do you have the second one? And what's the time period between the first and the second? Is there a wait time?
I shouldn't have a wait time now, I should be okay, so.
So I mean, as far as the second class or the second test, can you just go right in and take that second test?
I, yeah.
Or the other certification or desert, like you have to wait a year?
I'll have to check. I don't think I have to wait, because I've already, I've already got my time in.
Yeah.
So I don't think I have to wait for the second test.
So could you potentially take test one and test two in the same day, or do you have to pass test one before you go to test two?
I don't know about that, but I ain't taking both those in the same day, but I'm just gonna tell you, that'd be hard. I mean, it's tough enough, you know, just to pass the one, so.
Do you have a next, uh, date in mind for your next test?
I'm just waiting on my, waiting on my letter. As soon as I get it, then I can schedule. And so it, I, I'd expect it any day.
Obviously, sooner you pass this test, the happier we're all gonna be, so.
And this is just a month-to-month contract, so.
Yeah, 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 well, it's a lot better than what we was proposed other outside of Michael.
All right, any questions from the board on this contract renewal? Will the price increase? Okay, looking for a motion?
I made the motion. We said, uh, accepted service agreement with Michael Stuckey.
Second.
Rex and Bree made a motion. Is, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. And then the last thing I got on the agenda is to reappoint Gary Finley. He's been a longtime member on the, uh, Western Wayne Sewage District Board, and it's time to renew that. And apparently he's willing, if he's still on the agenda, so I assume that Julie's talked to him. So, I haven't heard any different, so we'll need a motion to reappoint Gary.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Danny made a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Rex. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes on that. Is there anything else you guys see in the pile that I'm forgetting about?
Anything, any actions?
Yeah.
We're waiting for that here, man. Uh, we've got something here about this. I don't know what Gateway Capital Access Detail Report.
I think that's part of her clerk's report.
Okay, we don't hear on that, okay. And then the parks line, would you have a check of her on that?
Yeah, I think that's part of the, the funds to, uh, help raise from that grant, to purchase the signs. And basically what that grant would do is, uh, the poor bottom of the existing playground structure, that would take out the wood chips and be able to put a, uh, poor structuring, which is more legal for insurance reasons, so we don't have the, uh, issues with the, uh, well, actually what it is, it's ground up skids that we use for mulch. So the concern is with the, uh, chemicals in it, obviously, perhaps fragments of nails in it, so. And of course, you can't use rubber tires, so this is the most environmental safe, permanent fix would be these, this poor playground. So that's the, uh, what we're going for, for this grant, and then I think there was a, another small addition of like an umbrella over that one, um, picnic table by the old Big Diamond.
Okay.
And, uh, just as much as we can get done, honestly, for the, the funds that we have, so. And then obviously, the, uh, funds that people contribute just make it even better, the more stuff we can get done, you know? If we add another picnic table, or if we add, you know, I would like to see, hopefully, and then before I retire again, is another, uh, roof over the, uh,
Shelter.
Shelter House that got tore down several years ago, and, uh, haven't matched the other shelter house. There's always stuff we can do to improve down at the parks, so.
Okay.
Um, I think this is a good opportunity with this particular grant, so, you know, we definitely need to take advantage of it, so.
There she is.
There he is.
Oh, hmm. Another five minutes, we've been done, don't we?
We, uh, I think our timer stopped on us, Julie, and I don't know where it stopped at.
Okay.
But, uh, we did not approve the fee schedule, and then I wrote down Rex and Bree for the, uh, grant on letter C. Rex and Bree for the contract with Michael, and then Dan and Rex for the contract with, uh, or have Gary review of his, uh.
And there was some question about what that, separate bank accounts?
Um, for the patronicity.
Yeah, I can't say that right either.
I have to have a separate bank account.
It can't be just a line item on the.
No, it has to be a separate bank account, so I just need authorization to open a.
They did, they passed it.
Okay.
We just thought it sounded.
That's what it is. Yes, um, they want it all inclusive on its own.
Um, Lenny's gonna find out more information about the mowers, about us keeping the grasshopper instead of selling it. So the figures will change, so nothing happened on that.
Okay, and you said the fee schedule, we tabled that?
Yeah, we're still talking about that.
Doing some other things with it.
Okay. Um.
Uh, the county bought State Street, so we don't have to worry about that right now.
You know, the only change with that since tomorrow is the last day they can redeem it. I suppose that current property owner could come in and pay all that and redeem it, but I don't, he wouldn't.
I don't see that happening. So the county, for the, for the BLIT program, bought that?
Well, no, not for the BLIT program, they just, they just, there was nobody else who did it, so those were commissioners' deed, so I think we can impose on them the requirement for what we're gonna do. So I'm gonna get with the county, they have until the, the, tomorrow, the fourteenth is the date. A property owner or anybody that has an interest in the property can redeem it, and then the county will need it to themselves on the seventeenth. And at that point, I'll contact them to see what their plans are with the property, so maybe we won't have to front the money.
Um, yes, because, um, I did give that, that one and the other two properties, um, to, I can never say her name. Um, the, the girl that's handling that from the county, the BLIT program, so she knew about that, and that was one of the things she said is, um, part of that would be them finding a way to either purchase it or gain access to it, so.
Instead of them asking us, what's our plan with it, we can ask them, what's your plan with that?
What's your plan with it? Yes, yes.
Uh, Pam never showed up.
Okay.
So we'll talk with her later, I guess.
Well, yeah.
And else went as normal, so.
Okay, did we vote on anything for Jimmy and the skating rink?
Uh, we voted to close our half of the street, and I'll have to check with the county, because they got the other half of the street, the south side of Milton Street, so we just take care of the north side of Milton Street.
To the, to the boundary.
Okay.
So, and then everything else is pretty much up with the softball board.
Okay.
We approved both contracts with Commonwealth.
Okay. That you guys need to sign?
Yeah.
Yes, you need to attest my signature. Uh, Thomas is gonna swing by tomorrow on his way to Rushville and pick that up.
Okay.
And then, um, you need to post this stuff on the bulletin boards out front, and take pictures of it and send it in, so they can have proof.
Oh, so they have proof that we, okay.
And I think that catches you up.
Well, on Jeff's pastor, they agreed that it would be from town limit to town limit for forty.
Yeah, for our downtown.
For that grant, for that help grant.
I don't know if there's a lot of people that's eligible, but.
I could put that on our website, too. Um, Ryan is, um, tweaking stuff and, and getting everything, working with, uh, Indiana Office of Technology, and, um, putting the final touches on that part of it. And then he's, we're still waiting on some things for, um, to get the emails, but finally. Because it took a bit, because, uh, they had my, they, my emails were all screwed up, so we got that back. So I need to take pictures of all of this stuff, correct, and post it?
That is correct.
Okay.
And they left all of that stuff to sign as well. I don't know if they need that many copies, but.
Probably one, well, um, probably.
They said wait for us, that we can retain one of the copies, they just want one original back.
Okay, I didn't know.
We already had one, so.
Okay, I didn't know if they wanted to make sh, if, uh, Okra needed a copy or not, so.
Other than that, we're ready to approve the bills if anybody has any other business to bring up. Yes, sir.
Uh, need to tell her about the, the tree was.
Yes, we just wanted to make sure that you did have funds for the tree removal cost. We did approve that. Knowing, or hoping that you had a fund for it, so, and if not, it was.
How much was that one?
Twenty-two fifty, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
I can take that one out of.
At the beginning of the year, we would be okay.
We can take that one out of, um, um, I might be able to take it. Well, I don't wanna take it out of park stuff. Um, but I should have enough in edit to take it out of edit. I'm gonna split edit and MBH on the mower, but you said that'll change?
Yes.
Okay.
It may be just a hair higher if they, if we keep the grasshopper. But it'd be better in the long run, and we'll just keep it, the wellhouse, we don't want it to be transported.
Okay. And I'll put edit on that one.
All right, anything else? Were we talking money? Okay, motion to pay our bills.
Make a motion, we paid, uh, our bills as presented.
Any motion on the floors, or a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nobody's gonna blame you.
And then the final thing of the night's, the financial report that's been presented to us in email and, and our copy in front of us.
Make a motion, accept point.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any conversation? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Some of the excess stuff that you, whoops, had. Um, one of the things, uh, Mike Crawley, uh, we had to do our capital asset. Um, he's got the numbers and everything back, and everybody should have a copy of this.
Yes.
It will be posted in our, um, with the financial report on Gateway, but so everybody, um, has a copy of that. If you need a copy of that for anything, okay. And then the other one is just some sample ideas of, because we've been talking about the Wilson Park sign forever. And then, because we started with something small like this one. And then when, um, Nathan suggested that we have one big piece of, uh, what is that, out there that you guys didn't need for the, uh,
I'll call it billboard board.
Okay, that we could cut in half and, and use that. Um, we talked about possibly, um, seeing if the, um, art teacher would want to have some kind of a program or something for their students, um, but there was a couple, I, I kinda come up with a couple. And if they come up with some more, that's great. Um, I just, thought if we're gonna have something that big, this is kinda dull.
Yeah.
So something a little more cheerful and colorful. So if anybody else has ideas, um, back on the patronicity thing, you did tell them we were, we, we got the fundraiser page and everything approved?
Yeah, that goes live March twenty-sixth, I think, is what I told everybody.
Um, we can put a small video. I know Pershing, um, their council president just went up and, and spoke about, um, what, what it's gonna be used for and how people can help make it happen. If we want to do that, we don't have to, um, but we, um, we put different levels of the donors, kinda like we did when we put the park stuff in before.
Okay.
Um, you know, as far as you get thanks, you get a hat, you, you know, this, this puts you on our donor board in, you know, bronze, silver, gold, whatever. Um, but we need to come up with thank you cards, and then if we wanna do a hat or card or mug or something to say thank you on the lower end, um, that's, those are some ideas that we need to discuss. But we have until March to, you know, when that starts, and then we have, what, sixty days?
Yeah, I explained it was during the, uh, solar eclipse times, maybe we could do something to help raise money, so.
That's gonna be awesome, time to do it. It turned out perfect, so that's all, that's all I really had.
Do, uh, did you get access to the glasses for those solar clips, or you said you could, or?
I, I have a whole mess of them here.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just like paper, three D stuff, but, um, I have quite a bit, so if anybody is, um, interested in them, they're welcome to come to the town hall and, um, and get some, because I have, I think I purchased like a hundred of them, so I've got, I've got quite a few.
Okay, I guess, I know one time you said you had, but then I didn't have any more, so I guess.
And then can we use, if necessary, some of that Creating Places Fund for the park sign? If there's enough noise, no?
No, because I included it in that, and, um, that is one thing to Okra. We're kinda picky with what we can use stuff for and what we can't. Now, if, if we get additional funds over and beyond what, um, we need, then we can purchase, um, more equipment.
Just not a sign.
And stuff, but we cannot use it for a sign.
Even, even the donors' support money can't go to it?
Well, that, um.
Because it's part of the grant?
The, any donor money we get after we get the grant portion. So if we need fifty thousand, so fifty thousand and one, we can use that one and so on.
Okay, so it is a possibility.
It is a possibility, yes. So that's. Yeah, I think that's all I have.
Okay.
It's just gonna, oh, yes, we did. It was just, uh, kinda mind-boggling that we, we were approved and we qualified for all of that, but then we have to apply for all these grants, just like you would apply for every other grant, even though we already got it. We still have to go through hoops, so.
Politics.
Politics.
Any final thoughts, ladies and gents? All right, pass the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second. Motion passes. Have a good Valentine's Day.